Okay, if I can have your attention, we will get started. Ms. Whitby, if you'll call the roll?
Yes, sir. Ross.
Here.
White.
Here.
Absent. Robinson.
Here.
Baxter.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Height.
Here.
And Witcher.
Present.
Coram is present, sir.
Thank you very much. I invite you to rise as our city attorney is going to offer our blessing and the pledge.
Lord, as we gather tonight, we thank you for the opportunity to serve our neighbors here in North Little Rock. We ask you to help us to act with character and conviction, help us to listen with understanding and goodwill, help us to measure our words and to speak with charity and restraint. During this National Police Memorial Week, we pray for your comfort and peace for the families and friends of law enforcement officers who have given their lives in the line of duty, as well as for those who serve in our police department as they honor their fallen brothers and sisters. Lord, help us to always remember that it is a privilege to serve our community, and we pray tonight that you will grant the city council wisdom as they make decisions that impact our city and those who live here, and we pray all this in your son's name. Amen.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So move. Second, on the motion.
On the motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Communications, I'm showing one through six. Anybody want to pull one?
Can we pull number six?
Number five.
Three.
Pull three, pull five.
Six.
And six.
Please.
Yeah, we've got six.
Okay, how about a motion to accept one, two, and four?
So move.
How about second, on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Number three, do you want that read or by title?
By title, just kind of explain a little bit, I guess.
Okay, this is an email from Hank Godwin to Mayor Smith and the city council regarding the Ozark Missions Project impact statements, and then the statement is attached, or a report.
And just kind of, you know, this is their 12th year, well, coming up on, I guess, their 13th year, and just the projects that they have completed since then, it's amazing. And I know, you know, we were emailing back to Hank telling him thank you, and while, you know, it's 509 total projects in this time, how that spills over into the neighborhood too, it's not just the houses that they, that they're actually doing projects on, so I just really want to thank them for everything they've done for North Little Rock.
Absolutely. Hank and Liza both have done a great job, and Ozark Mission Project is on top of our list, no doubt. How about a motion?
Vote to accept and file.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Number five, by title or in its entirety?
Entirety, please, because it kind of explains what's up.
Okay, this is a media release, notice of open house public meeting. It is an open forum meeting concerning Levy Area Jump Start Street Improvements. It says what, "You are invited to attend the public involvement meeting on Tuesday, May 15, 2018, beginning at 4:00 p.m. and ending at 7:00 p.m. at Levy Baptist Church in Wayman Hall at 3501 Pike Avenue to discuss the proposed street skate improvements in the area of Camp Robinson Road and Pike Avenue. Discussions will be open, will be on an open forum style with no formal presentations. Residents and business and property owners in the area are invited to attend the open forum to view plans, ask questions, and provide input on the project. Representatives from the city of North Little Rock and consultant team will be present to discuss the project and to review public input. When is Tuesday, which is tomorrow, May 15, 2018, beginning at 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m.?" Again, where is the Levy Baptist Church, 3501 Pike Avenue, North Little Rock? And that's all.
Mayor.
Motion.
Yes, sir.
Real quick, this is, for those folks who don't know, this is an opportunity to look at our 10% design phase of the Levy Jump Start Project between 37th and what is commonly known as underneath the Levy Bridge, that area there, so if you, you don't have to live necessarily in the Levy area, but if you travel that area frequently, like, and that's part of your commute every day, we'd like for you to come in and look at the 10% design phase. Now is the time to make some suggestions, and if there's something you don't particularly like, or would like to hear from you if there's something that you do like as well. So it's a, it's a drop and go, or drive-through, if you will, just stop in long enough to look at the me, look at the plans and provide input, either positive or negative, on those plans. So that's tomorrow, 5:00 to 7:00 at Levy Baptist Church.
Thank you very much. Number six.
Mayor.
Please.
Yeah.
I just want to say, this is one of those things that you, you know, if you don't go look at this now, you're going to look back and say, "Oh, I had no idea, what are they doing," or anything, because there's a lot of things, I mean, there's, in these engineers' plans, that there are one-way streets, there are streets, there are two-way streets, they're being made one-way streets, there are streets that are being, the access is being blocked off, it'll be closed off, so everyone needs to be there beforehand, not till after it's already completed.
I hope our Levy Merchants Association is aware of the meeting.
Yes, they are.
Okay.
And I, Mayor, I just want to say one more thing, this is, this is not just something brand new, this has been going on for at least three years, and we've had a multitude of meetings with the public, a multitude, and many, many, many people have had input into this, and we're pleased to get to this point.
And at that point, Mayor, I'll move to accept and file.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Number six, read or by title?
Please read it in its entirety, please.
This is an email from David Miles to Councilmember Height regarding the Burns Park Golf Course, Charlie. I've been playing Burns Park since the 70s. Course had gotten, had gotten rather rough. Played the championship course this A.M., really looked good. My kudos to Terry Hartwick and Steve Ralston for the improvements they have made and are still making. What I've seen over the last couple of years is Steve and his group not just talking about improvements, but getting on the backhoes and handling shov, I'm assuming he means shovels. With Terry now doing the course improvements, it has been a great combination of the two. This is the best I've seen Burns Park in a long time, and it's getting better, not easier, but better. Please share my thoughts with the city council.
Move to accept and file. Second.
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 On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Number six, read or by title?
Please read it in its entirety, please.
This is an email from David Miles to Councilmember Height regarding the Burns Park Golf Course, Charlie. I've been playing Burns Park since the 70s. Course had gotten, had gotten rather rough. Played the championship course this A.M., really looked good. My kudos to Terry Hartwick and Steve Ralston for the improvements they have made and are still making. What I've seen over the last couple of years is Steve and his group not just talking about improvements, but getting on the backhoes and handling shov, I'm assuming he means shovels. With Terry now doing the course improvements, it has been a great combination of the two. This is the best I've seen Burns Park in a long time, and it's getting better, not easier, but better. Please share my thoughts with the city council.
Move to accept and file. Second.
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 On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Number six, read or by title?
Please read it in its entirety, please.
This is an email from David Miles to Councilmember Height regarding the Burns Park Golf Course, Charlie. I've been playing Burns Park since the 70s. Course had gotten, had gotten rather rough. Played the championship course this A.M., really looked good. My kudos to Terry Hartwick and Steve Ralston for the improvements they have made and are still making. What I've seen over the last couple of years is Steve and his group not just talking about improvements, but getting on the backhoes and handling shov, I'm assuming he means shovels. With Terry now doing the course improvements, it has been a great combination of the two. This is the best I've seen Burns Park in a long time, and it's getting better, not easier, but better. Please share my thoughts with the city council.
Move to accept and file. Second.
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 On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Number six, read or by title?
Please read it in its entirety, please.
This is an email from David Miles to Councilmember Height regarding the Burns Park Golf Course, Charlie. I've been playing Burns Park since the 70s. Course had gotten, had gotten rather rough. Played the championship course this A.M., really looked good. My kudos to Terry Hartwick and Steve Ralston for the improvements they have made and are still making. What I've seen over the last couple of years is Steve and his group not just talking about improvements, but getting on the backhoes and handling shov, I'm assuming he means shovels. With Terry now doing the course improvements, it has been a great combination of the two. This is the best I've seen Burns Park in a long time, and it's getting better, not easier, but better. Please share my thoughts with the city council.
Move to accept and file. Second.
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 On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Number six, read or by title?
Please read it in its entirety, please.
This is an email from David Miles to Councilmember Height regarding the Burns Park Golf Course, Charlie. I've been playing Burns Park since the 70s. Course had gotten, had gotten rather rough. Played the championship course this A.M., really looked good. My kudos to Terry Hartwick and Steve Ralston for the improvements they have made and are still making. What I've seen over the last couple of years is Steve and his group not just talking about improvements, but getting on the backhoes and handling shov, I'm assuming he means shovels. With Terry now doing the course improvements, it has been a great combination of the two. This is the best I've seen Burns Park in a long time, and it's getting better, not easier, but better. Please share my thoughts with the city council.
Move to accept and file. Second.
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 On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Number six, read or by title?
Please read it in its entirety, please.
This is an email from David Miles to Councilmember Height regarding the Burns Park Golf Course, Charlie. I've been playing Burns Park since the 70s. Course had gotten, had gotten rather rough. Played the championship course this A.M., really looked good. My kudos to Terry Hartwick and Steve Ralston for the improvements they have made and are still making. What I've seen over the last couple of years is Steve and his group not just talking about improvements, but getting on the backhoes and handling shov, I'm assuming he means shovels. With Terry now doing the course improvements, it has been a great combination of the two. This is the best I've seen Burns Park in a long time, and it's getting better, not easier, but better. Please share my thoughts with the city council.
Move to accept and file. Second.
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 On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Let's invite our high school student athletes in, Mary Beha.
The, it's certainly a pleasure to have our basketball players here from North Little Rock High School. The probably unprecedented in, for a long, long time, I don't know that, that we've ever had a boys' state championship and a girls' state championship in the same year. I had an opportunity to visit with these young athletes earlier and told them how important they were to our community and how proud we are of all of them. So I wanted them to come, and we're going to show them on TV, we're going to introduce them one at a time, we're going to take some group pictures, and so I'm going to move down to the podium, and the coaches are going to help us introduce the girls and the guys.
All right.
Coach. All right, girls, I'm going to ask you all if...
Our group picture, girls, do you want one with just the girls and leave the boys out? All right, boys over here, out of the way, guys.
I knew they were going out of line.
It won't be the last time.
Okay, well, coach, if you want to introduce your girls, y'all raise your hands so everybody at home can, can see, and then we'll come get a picture when they call your name out.
All right, first, this is Coach Dolly Jackson, she's my assistant coach. Ashanti Backus, Damala Brown, Adia Carnegie, Sarah Douglas, Amber Hawkinson, who's not here tonight, Tiana Mackey, Samaras Morris, Yamares Morris, Jordan Neal, Yasmin Ott, Anaya Pettis, Katie Pryor, Kennedy Tucker, and Tashi Woodruff is one of our managers. And it's a pleasure being here. Awesome.
Everybody at home is watching right now, you know, it's, it's really exciting to know that, that y'all are the best of the best, and North Little Rock is proud of all of you. So let's get a quick picture.
State champion. Okay, guys, awesome.
Okay, Coach Rice, your guys are up. How many times have we won state champion in the last five years?
Four.
Four out of the last five years? Way to go, guys, we're so proud of you. Coach?
He is not, not here also, Caleb AG is not here, Ray Fresh, Sean Fudge, there he is, Otis Jordan, Miles Moody is not here, Moses Moody, Colin Moore, Mason Shaw, Spencer Sims, Keenan Viesley, Mackay Washington, Decory Watkins is not here, and so our assistant coach, Wes Bellon. So here's your 2018 state champs up there.
Hey! Boosting bit for Wildcats.
Congratulations, guys. Thank you.
Mayor, I don't know whether you're aware of it or not, but the high school has a new T-shirt out, it's called Title Town, North Little Rock. I've got one. Yeah, I got a prize.
You get an extra large.
Mayor, earlier today, someone pointed out that the chess team was also the state champions, so...
Absolutely, and...
...may want to have someone on your staff invite them.
Absolutely, and we also had academic signing day today, I, I missed it, but we had a bunch of winners, it's not state champions in academics too. So, yes, I've seen that T-shirt, matter of fact, the biggest round of applause I think I've ever gotten at a school assembly was about a month ago, when I told everybody that I was going to introduce legislation to the council, changing a name from North Little Rock to Title Town, USA. So that's three state, state championships this week, this year, football, basketball, and girls and boys both, so great year for our school, no doubt. Okay, I think, right now, what I want to do is reconvene the public hearing from the last two meetings, this will be our third public hearing, I've got one, two, three, I've got four people signed up to speak, so I'm going to ask that you come to the microphone, introduce yourself, and we're going to have, let everybody have three minutes, so try to keep within that, I'll, I'll wave at you once your three minutes gets up. So I'm going to go right down the list, in no particular order, Jennifer Johansson.
Good evening, Mayor and council, I'm Jennifer Johansson, I'm a Levy resident and a customer of the North Little Rock Electric Department, and I just wanted to speak to the restructuring plan that they have, and I'm in support of it, and they have looked down the road to what would be needed in the future, and they've come up a plan to save for it, and so I support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Pastor Dandridge.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council, my name is Daryl Dandridge, I'm pastor of New Creation Bible Church in North Little Rock on Percy Mason in the Military Heights area. Certainly as far as the, in reference to the utility of the light, light company, light bill going up, we are, we are understanding of what's taking place, and there are things that need to take place in our community. As I stated before, that inflation, we understand, happens. It's going to, going to happen whether we want it to or not, because as we know, the definition of inflation is the cost of living is going up while our income remains the same in our community, and not only in Military Heights, but also just throughout North Little Rock and parts of Sherwood area. We have so many people that's on, on fixed income, and our biggest concern was how the information was not necessarily provided. Now, we did talk about it last time, and it was made clear that we did get the information out, we put the information in the classified sections of the newspaper, which nobody reads, okay? And so that's the thing there, that is not your fault, that is not, but just like in our light bills, in the bills that we receive monthly, that there are inserts about what's going on, what's taking place, and, and I think unless, unless I missed it or we missed it, that's one of the things that I think if we had been made more aware of what was about to take place, of what was going on, then it would have set, set with us a little bit better. And so, we, again, we understand that there are needs that have to take place, but how it was, we went about, you all went about getting the information out, and then a lot of people not knowing about it, is one of the things that really affected us, and so as a church, we are trying to help the community, and so many people already come to us for help, and now we understand that more help may be needed if this passes, and so with those of you who are voting for us, we want to make sure that our voices are heard as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Pastor. Um, let's see. Henry?
That's me.
Yeah.
That's me.
Yeah.
My name is Henry Fissback, I live in the Turd Ward, been living there 56 years, so I've been around a while. First, I'm going to tell you I'm against this rate increase, which is, seems to be retaliation for voting for the 1% sales tax increase. I had the understanding, when you come to those meetings, the community meetings, that this 1% sales tax would take care of City of North Little Rock for quite some time. But anyway, we, what it's increasing, it hits the low-income, lower-elected users, and the hardest, and the least able to pay in some business, this is very discriminatory to me, and that's what I read all about this, that's what it said when I read in the paper. This consultant is putting a spin on you, and sold you some snake oil, I believe, and, and so you snake oil, and then you will hire outside attorney to peddle this snake oil on electric customers, which is all a waste of taxpayers' money. We had our own attorney down here who could handle that, should have handled that, so in a, so with this rate increase, you create an incentive for more business and residents to leave the city, and not even come, come here in the first place, which causes city to decline. My property went down 10 to 15, I mean, 50% the last 10 to 15 years. It's going, it's declining where I live, it's bad, bad shape. So this city needs to start practicing efficiency and not rate increases, plenty of room for efficiency in North Little Rock. The 1% operation tax should apply to all departments, if not, it needs to be corrected immediately. See if I can keep up my stuff here. You want the least able to pay the elected rate increase, and the upper-middle class get a free ride, and the rich possibly get a reduction, maybe if the truth is known. If the electric department needs, needs money, there are $29,000, I understand, rate that oper, paid the elected customers, $29,000 electric customers, they're paying a half percent rate, we're paying a half percent tax on this, on this elected rates. That money, and that operate, that's the operation tax. Give this tax money back to the electric department, it's a huge amount, and they can use this money. And I said, I think it's cruel, and a piece of legislation, I urge this council to vote against it. It might be a little bad talking, but that's the way I feel.
And that's why we have this time for you to come tell us how you feel. Thank you. Phyllis Hodges.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm marvelous.
Great. I want to stand before you and just tell you something really quick, I am so grateful to stand before you all again. I didn't know your board members like I know some of them now. After the last meeting, I made some personal phone calls so I could get to know these individuals. I know they have a heart for North Little Rock, but I'm going to read this off real quick. Debbie Walsh came to visit me, she blessed me, she shared so much information, and she sent me some links to find out some of the questions that I had. Beth had already been a part of my business in terms of coming and supporting and doing those type of things, so I want to personally thank her. Linda Robinson and Maurice Kane, they took the time, Steve Kane, unfortunately, Ron was so busy, he didn't come, but a few minutes ago, when he came in here, he took the time, I didn't even know who he was, he started talking to me. Murray came, and Murray, when he came, I worked by appointments to stay in business. Now, he came one day, and that wasn't his time, and I gave him another time, and guess what, Mayor, he stood me up, my God, and then Charlie didn't even respond to my email. So I just want to thank you all for taking the time to come and just hear me from a personal standpoint. Tonight at 9 o'clock, I will be on Channel 16, talking about the businesses that was in Little Rock on 9th Street, how they pulled together and how finances came in. When I, as a business owner, when I found out that, about the rate increase and a lot of things in that area, I had questions, because from a business owner myself, I personally cannot afford a increase, but I do know by talking to these alderman board members, they talked about how important this is, and I said, wow, if it's important, yes, we want to do something to create whatever we need to upgrade, but all I'm asking tonight is, and I know we have other businesses, if we can come up with something, again, we just found out about it not too long ago, but if we can come up with something to give us more time to maybe work on our finances, acquire more customers, or something, because if you come in there right now and approve this, personally, myself, it will cause a heartache. And I did talk to other business owners and pastors, as a clergy myself, that will hurt of them are convicted felons. If we go out of business, just like we've had Fox and the Hound go out of business, we've had Cilantro's got a business, that we've had, uh, businesses in North Little Rock because of structural or even sometimes theft, that they're going out of business. And it's not to say that it's because we don't have the service from the police or the firefighter. I think we got the best. Mayor, I, um, heard you speak very articulate about the one cent selling tax. You were at the Walker Law Firm. I was there. I am not here to fight everything that comes up. I'm not looking to do that. But I supported that. I even put the signs up at the restaurant, and I actually had out, went out and voted for it. So, now, I'm asking each and everyone who can make a decision on this to think about the crumbs that maybe to some other people. It's what's keeping our lights on. It's keeping people employed. And we ask for maybe there is alternative ways to where maybe we can be something different from Little Rock. I've been in North Little Rock for six years. I love it. We got some great service, great police, great firefighters, great civil servants here. And I say that this is our time to where we can shine and do something different and make a bold move, keep businesses like Hogs, North Bar, uh, all the great businesses, the Carousel. People will be in here. Let's look for them, their employees. Thank you first time.
Thank you very much. Okay, now, we'll close that public hearing officially, and let's go to that piece of legislation.
Yes, sir.
An Ordinance Establishing Electric Rates for North Little Rock Electric Department Customers, Third and Final Reading.
Okay, um, I'm prepared to go forward with that. Uh, we have a motion.
Move for adoption.
Second. Any discussion? Ms. Ross?
Uh, yes, we do have an amendment under Section Four. Uh, it has the date October two thousand nineteen in Section Three and in two thou-, in Section Four. Section Four needs to be October two thousand twenty. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I'll have that as a motion. How about a second to that amendment?
Second.
Um, Ms., Ms. Whitby?
On the motion to amend, um, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
No.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
All right, how about a motion to adopt as amended?
So, second.
Ms. Ross?
Just, you know, I wasn't here at the last meeting for the last public hearing, but I did get to watch it online, and I listened to what individuals are saying, and then I'm hearing it again tonight, that they're talking about the one cent sales tax. And I don't know where the disconnect is there, but the electric department has their separate budget. That one cent sales tax has nothing to do with the electric department. The electric department is not funded through that one cent sales tax. It's not funded through the city budget. They have their separate budget. So, I just want everybody to understand that that has nothing to do with any tax restructuring for the electric department. This is strictly, it's separate from the city. The one percent sales tax has nothing to do with this whatsoever.
Correct. That's correct. It, this is a company, and we just happen to own the company. And, uh, so we have to make decisions, uh, as, as a standalone business, just as energy would, or, or Southwest Electric Co-op, or First Electric Co-op. Uh, we've got, we have to, um, to make the hard decisions as a, as a board of directors.
I know.
Go ahead.
I just want to say one thing else, too. Mr. Yard said, you know, having owned a business, I get it, believe me. Forty dollars a month is a lot for anyone, any, any business. But, you know, in the restaurant business, you know, our suppliers, they didn't let us vote when they wanted to raise the meat prices, or when they wanted to raise the price of potatoes, you know. It's all related to, you know, the financing on their end, and this is what we're looking at, too, as far as the electric department, is we have to cover our bills, and we have to cover our, uh, customers, and make sure that we have the proper supplies. When we need to put out a transfer, we gotta make sure we have the money to put that supply out there.
Absolutely. On the motion?
On the motion to adopt as amended, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
No.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
No.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. And all those that participated in the, uh, public hearing for the last, uh, three meetings, we certainly do appreciate your input. Thank you very much. Uh, okay, let's go into, uh, the others that are signed up for, uh, comments tonight are on the, um, dirt moving deal out in Rose City. Uh, just for y'all's information, I'm, I'm not gonna call that legislation tonight. I'm gonna hold it. Uh, but you're here, and we'd love to have your input. So, with that, um, those that want to speak on oh eighteen thirty, uh, looks like Sherry Briggs? Sherry Briggs?
Steven.
Steven. Okay, sorry.
How's everybody today?
Okay.
Yes, uh, I was speaking on that, uh, dirt moving. Well, the guy said he wanted to make farmland out of this, and we already got skegels and stuff already in that neighborhood already. So, we really don't, everybody in the neighborhood is against it, you know. So, you know, it's up to you all, but everybody in the neighborhood is against it. Maybe a few people here are just gonna be speaking on that, but, uh, we are against that because we know, uh, making farmland and selling dirt, you know, just is removing it, so you're gonna dig a hole. And we don't really want it at, that in our neighborhood. So, we just, we vote no. Maybe we wanna, this, uh, you know, we don't own that. Thank you.
Thank you, Steven. Pastor Earl Graham.
Good evening, Mayor, and to the board. Um, I rise to a point of concern. I am the, um, of course, my name is Earl Graham. I'm the senior pastor of Mount Pleasant Baptist Church, um, there that's located right off of Page Mill Road. Um, and it's primarily the point of concern for us. Um, I know for myself, I can speak to new knowledge of it. Um, and this ordinance as it relates to digging and topsoil, I know it has a direct effect on our congregation. Of course, as a pastor, I have to make considerations on our weekly attendance, our worshippers, our congregants that come, and those that we have living in the community. Um, and we have primarily concerns about, um, our property, how it will affect our area, our property, our parking lot, access to it, um, and those things, as it may negatively affect us as a church, um, from week to week. Um, and so, I don't really have a bunch of, um, long details or speeches about it. Um, but there are, there are some things to consider that we want to lift, and more, more will come in a minute to talk about that. Um, we wanna, just want to put that to the order. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Paul Smith?
Good evening. I'm also with, uh, lifelong member of Mount Pleasant Baptist Church. And one of our main concerns, we relocated from twenty-two hundred Willow Street to eight-hundred Page Mill about a year ago on February seventeen. And one of our main concerns is that we've not received any notification concerning the project. So, as of now, all of this is new to the congregation, new to the members, and we have multiple questions, again, as Pastor stated, how this is going to affect the property that we recently purchased. Uh, we noticed that there were several things concerning easements, and if it's okay, uh, I took a couple photos so that you can see, and if possible for you to look at them. Then we have a list of concerns that we just would like noted. We realize we won't receive an answer tonight, but just to put that information, uh, for your hearing.
Thank you very much. We'll pass those around. Uh, let me ask a quick question. I, I talked to this, uh, individual that owns that property, and he told me that, uh, the church was supporting him and was glad that he was there cleaning out all that property in behind y'all. So, that is not a fact, correct?
No, sir. At this point, there has not been written notification to our board of trustees and directors as to what is actually taking place, the purpose, and again, how this will affect the adjoining acres that we recently purchased.
Okay.
So, if there has been some conversation, it has not been in the format that it should have been with our trustees, things of that nature.
Okay. Pastor, you agree with that? Okay. All right. Well, if I talk to him again, I'm gonna encourage him to get with you, because I was led to believe that y'all were for it, so.
Uh, some of our concerns is that, um, it was our understanding that the streets between Texas and Page Mill Road and possibly Bradburn would be used for heavy equipment transport. Uh, and the photos that we submitted, just to make note of the short terms on the street and a very tight, uh, maneuvering of some of the large equipment would kind of make it tight. Another question would be, how can there be an alternate route, uh, to the prop without accessing the easements along the church or through our parking lot? Next question would be, what agency or person will monitor the mining, and how often, and how long would the project last? Who will be responsible for any repairs or damages that result from the mining and the trafficking? A main concern is, would this cause any flooding issues, especially with the lake behind the church and removing the topsoil? How would that affect us? Is there a bond in place, and if so, does the city have a copy of that? And also, is there any additional insurance that will be required? Uh, again, we're just wanting to know what is taking place, how that's going to affect us, and with us being new to the community in Rose City, we want to make sure that our investment is properly taken care of. Thank you.
Absolutely. You can count on it. Okay.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Um, today I spoke with, uh, the, uh, gas pipeline company, and they advised me that there are two gas pipelines that runs somewhere back there on that property. One pipeline has been there since nineteen forty, and the other pipeline was added in nineteen seventy. So, and if the, um, pipeline burst, it's like a thousand pounds of gas, which will take out the person and whatever else is around it. And so, I recommend, Mayor, that, and I, that ups, that this, uh, person, you know, get ups to go out there and, uh, measure off or determine where these pipelines are out there. But I spoke with, uh, Texas Eastern. Uh, they're now called something else Essential or something, but they said that there are pipelines back there.
Right. Okay, thank you. All right, let's go into, uh, new business.
Okay. R eighteen ninety-two, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain city-owned items and other equipment as surplus, providing for auction thereof.
Have a motion.
Don't move.
Second. On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R eighteen ninety-three, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Thomas Engineering Company Incorporated to provide engineering services for the Sixth Street Design Project appropriating funds.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R eighteen ninety-four, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Alisi Keys Construction for construction management and general contractor services for Argenta Plaza appropriating funds.
Move for adoption.
Second. Okay, I'm gonna stop right here and give everybody an update, as best I know it. Uh, you have a question? You want to wait?
I have an amendment.
Okay. All right, let me, uh, let me go through this proposal, um, as you can see at, at home or on the screen here. Uh, what we've done, you know, we're still just a little bit away from having a complete set of plans, uh, so that we can, can finish our bids on it. Uh, but we felt real comfortable with the numbers that we've got. And so, as you can see, uh, let's go to the next slide. Um, the, we're, the contract that we're gonna sign with, uh, Alisi Keys is gonna be a guaranteed maximum of four million dollars, because I, I think that y'all would feel comfortable approving that tonight. Uh, if it goes up or down after we bid it all out, then of course, we'll have to come back and make an adjustment. But what we did was, when we put our, our deal together with First Orion for their, uh, corporate headquarters, um, we, we had to enlarge the size of the plaza. So, the plaza went up approximately, um, thirteen thousand square feet bigger, uh, because we had to push the plaza all the way back to the front of the building. So, with that, the, our, uh, our cost got up to over four million dollars. So, what we did with, um, with our contractor and our architects, we sat down to look at deductive alternatives so that we could feel comfortable getting that number down to four million dollars. And none of them were deal breakers. They were, uh, you know, things like, uh, different kind of pavers. Uh, you know, we were gonna do pavers everywhere, and so we can cut out, uh, and use concrete on our ramps instead of using pavers. We were gonna use pavers on our patio behind the history building, and we're gonna do brush concrete there. Uh, we're gonna make the screen, uh, shorter, so it'll go to the top of the history building and stop instead of going on up three or four, five feet. And so, we made all these changes. We felt real comfortable with, we had a, I think, a quarter of a million dollar contingency. Bob, is that right? And we felt comfortable pulling a hundred out there. Uh, we don't see a whole lot of unforeseen things, so we didn't think we needed a quarter of a million contingency. We've got a hundred and fifty contingency. So, with all those done, uh, we were able to get that, uh, our guesstimate, our educated guess, under four million dollars. Uh, once we get all the, everything done, then we'll bid it out, and then we'll be able to come back. Uh, you know, the main reason that we needed to do this is, number one, is that Alisi Keys has been working for four or five months, and they don't have a contract yet. Number two, as you remember the last council meeting, we had to order that, uh, very large, uh, room, if you will, that's gonna go underground. And, uh, so we had to get this contract done so that Alisi Keys could get, get that ordered. So, uh, everything is going according to plan, a little bit slower. I talked to First Orion Corporation, uh, Thursday, maybe Thursday of last week, and they have their foundation and still, uh, drawings, and, uh, those are out for bid. So, they're working on getting ready to, to start dirt work. Uh, we're gonna coordinate their dirt work with our dirt work and, uh, do it all at the same time. We're about two weeks away from getting a final, uh, environmental, uh, on the, uh, on the dirt. We think, we don't think there's gonna be an issue there, but, uh, First Orion wanted to wait on that, and we had to, uh, come up with a final agreement on parking. So, I think we're good to go. Uh, we're gonna try to close on our property with, uh, First Orion, uh, in the next three weeks, maybe? And, uh, so then we'll be ready to go, and we'll have, uh, the money of that sale, and it'll go into the, uh, the downtown facilities board. So, that's where we are. Uh, ask me questions. Questions? Ms. White?
Just for people who are listening, what's the estimate of time for most of this to be completed now with all the changes?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna guess that, uh, fourteen to sixteen months on First Orion. And, uh, probably what we'll do is, uh, we'll start the plaza from Main Street and work back towards the building so that they can get finished, especially on the outside with all their big cranes and everything, uh, before we finish that last part of the backyard, if you will. Uh, we'll try to coordinate them all at the same time. Uh, the six-hundred main building, uh, that we'll own part of, it will start, uh, it's probably gonna run sixty days behind everything else. And, um, it's, we're looking at fourteen months to sixteen months on that, too. So, I'm looking, if we can get started here in June, you know, it's gonna be the end of next summer or the fall before we get it finished. All of it. Yes, sir.
So, you had to make some changes in order to get it back down under, what was the dollar amount of those changes that we had come up with?
Well, it was, uh, two hundred, three hundred thousand.
But we still hadn't put everything out on bid yet, so we could still go over.
Right. Right. Well, if, if for some reason these bids come in higher than we thought, we'll have to come back to the council and go, "Hey, look, we can't build it for four million. We're gonna, it's gonna be four point one."
Even, even with the changes, we don't know exactly what it's gonna be.
Correct. Correct.
So, what if we'd have left those alone and the bids had come in?
But we're gonna bid them. We're gonna bid them.
Okay.
We're gonna bid them. We'll, we'll build them as deductive alternatives.
Okay.
So, when we, when it goes out to bid, uh, like-
They're gonna bid two things.
Exactly.
Okay.
They'll say, "We'll do it, we'll do X for this much, and if you cut out these pavers, we're gonna do this much." So, yeah. And, and that's very common in, in construction when you go out for bids like that. Very common. Okay, do we have a motion, Ms. Whitby?
Yes, sir.
We have an amendment.
We have amendment. Uh, in Section Three, uh, where it says, is hereby appropriated from the carryforward fund, uh, this money is already in our fiscal year, uh, two thousand eighteen budget, so we need to amend that to say in FY eighteen budget.
FY eighteen budget?
Mm-hmm. It's not in-
Okay.
It's not in a carryforward fund.
How about a second to that amendment?
Agreed.
Second. On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Karen waving, nodding her head, yes?
Yes.
All right. Okay, good girl. Okay, how about a motion as amended?
So move.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Thank you very much. Bob Butler with Alisi Keys is here tonight, and, uh, Bob, I wanna say thank you for all y'all's hard work, and, um, let's get this contract signed and, and get that, the big underground house ordered. Thank you very much. Okay, next.
R eighteen ninety-five, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at one one zero six East Second Street in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Second.
Okay, I'm gonna call a public hearing. Anybody here to speak on eleven oh six East Second? Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion?
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R eighteen ninety-six, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at nine two one Rose Clair Drive in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Move for adoption. Second.
Call a public hearing on nine twenty-one Rose Clair. Anyone here to speak on nine twenty-one Rose Clair? Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross. White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
R eighteen ninety-seven, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at eight two zero East Fourteenth Street in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Got a motion by Mr. Baxter, and do I have a second?
Second.
Call a public hearing on eight twenty East Fourteenth. Anyone here to speak on eight twenty East Fourteenth? Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R eighteen ninety-eight, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with the Pulaski County Tax Collector against certain real property in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, as a result of grass-cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
How about a motion?
So move.
Second.
Call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on these, uh, grass-cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances? Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
You have a hand up.
I'm sorry, Ms. Ross.
This is my monthly glory land. We're still filing liens against the glory land property there on Marion, so I didn't know how far we were along as getting that property over, but we were supposed to be getting them all switched over to the city.
Which one is that?
It's the one on Marion.
That's the one right by the railroad tracks? Where we tore down the building?
Mm-mm. No, but we still have some pieces there, though, that we're-
I don't know.
This is another one.
Danny, will you talk to Debbie after the meeting and try to identify that property she's talking about?
The same way always, we're cutting every single, well, all year round, basically.
Okay, um-
On the motion, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Ordinance is O eighteen thirty, Mayor Smith.
We're gonna hold it.
Okay. O eighteen thirty-one, Councilmember Witcher.
Call it.
An ordinance reclassifying certain property located at forty-six hundred Bryley Road in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from I one to R two classification by amending ordinance number seven six nine seven of the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, adopting an amended land use plan for the subject property, granting a conditional use to allow a high school in an R two zone. First reading.
Maybe suspend the rules in place and on a second reading.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
An ordinance reclassifying certain property located at forty-six hundred Bryley Road in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from I one to R two classification by amending ordinance number seven six nine seven of the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, adopting an amended land use plan for the subject property, granting a conditional use to allow a high school in an R two zone. Second reading.
Maybe suspend the rules in place and on its third reading.
Second. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
An ordinance reclassifying certain property located at forty-six hundred Bryley Road in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from I one to R two classification by amending ordinance number seven six nine seven of the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, adopting an amended land use plan for the subject property, granting a conditional use to allow a high school in an R two zone. Third and final reading.
Move for adoption. And Mayor, we have someone here from McClellan Engineering, if any of the council members have a question.
How about a second?
Second.
Okay, I understand that this is a, uh, a new building by Lisa Academy?
Lisa, yes.
Yes.
Great school, great school. Any questions with, uh, for our engineers? Seeing none? Do I have a second on that, Ms. Whitby?
Yes, sir.
On the motion.
On the motion to adopt, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
O eighteen thirty-two, Councilmember Baxter.
Please call it.
An ordinance reclassifying certain property located at four nine zero one Allen Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from O one to R three by amending ordinance number seven six nine seven of the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. First reading.
Move to suspend all readings.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
How about a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt. Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
O eighteen thirty-three, Councilmember Robinson.
Please call it.
An ordinance reclassifying certain property located at nine zero one one Highway seventy in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from C three and C four to I two by amending ordinance number seven six nine seven of the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, adopting an amended land use plan for the subject property. First reading.
Suspend all readings. Second.
On the motion to suspend all readings.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion, and, and a second by Mr. Baxter. On the motion.
On the motion to adopt, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
O eighteen thirty-four, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance allowing a special use for a mobile home in an R two zone for certain real property located at seven zero zero one Faulkner Lake Road in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. First reading.
The, I'm, I'm of the understanding, if Shaun's, that, uh, uh, this was approved in planning, and the neighbors were okay with it? and the neighbors were okay with it?
Neighbors attended and after, during the meeting, they were more convinced by hearing what was going on and they're, they're happy with it.
Okay, so the guy's gonna put a mobile home there while he's building his home?
I didn't hear anybody show up, but, yeah, they're, it's a two-year, or two or three-year, a three-year, he plans on building it in a year and a half, probably. So he's gonna build a stick-built house and then remove the mobile home.
Okay. All right, how about a motion to suspend the readings?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made to suspend all readings, Ms. Whitby?
Ross White Robinson Baxter Harris Height and Witcher.
Yes.
About a motion to adopt?
I move.
Second. Ms. Ross.
This question is for the city attorney. You know, I watched the, how the residents worked it out in the planning commission. I was really impressed that they worked this out. But on the three years, he has to three years to have this moved out, whether he has his house built or not.
That is correct.
So, so, wha, how does the city enforce that in three years? Can he be cited? Does the city have the, the, it towed, or? I'm just curious, this...
Uh, because after three years, it would be a violation of the special use, the city at that time would have the authority to issue him a citation for being in violation of the special use.
Okay, so, it would be like a daily violation, basically?
Yes.
Okay.
On the motion.
A motion to adopt Ross White Robinson Baxter Harris Height and Witcher. On the emergency, Ross White Robinson Baxter Harris Height and Witcher. Oh 1835 Councilmember Baxter.
Uh, please call it.
An ordinance allowing a special use for a daycare center in a C-1 zone for certain real property located at 2000 Finley Drive in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. First reading.
Uh, move to suspend all readings.
Second.
On the motion to suspend.
Ross White Robinson Baxter Harris Height and Witcher.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Question?
Question?
Does the applicant agree to all conditions?
Yes.
Okay.
On the motion.
A motion to adopt Ross White Robinson Baxter Harris Height and Witcher. On the emergency, Ross White Robinson Baxter Harris Height and Witcher.
Yes.
Oh 1836.
Hold on a minute. Mr. Baxter.
Uh, Mayor, I just wanted, on, on this right here, Ms. Boyd has, uh, had a couple of businesses in my area. Uh, unfortunately, she was only a renter in my area, but I think we've got her nailed down this time to where she's actually buying property in the ward. So, glad to have her as a business owner.
Absolutely.
Good job.
Okay, 36.
36 Councilmember Height.
Please call it. An ordinance allowing a special use for an appraisal business and a residence in the same building for certain real property located at 2 East 56th Place in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. First reading.
Move to suspend all rules, all readings.
Second.
Motion to suspend just all the rules out too.
On the motion, Ross White Robinson Baxter Harris Height and Witcher. Your motion to adopt?
Please, give me a motion.
Motion to adopt.
You're gonna adopt.
Is there?
On the motion.
Okay, Ross White Robinson Baxter Harris Height and Witcher. On the emergency, Ross White Robinson Baxter Harris Height and Witcher. Oh 1837 Councilmember Taylor.
Please call it.
Thank you.
An ordinance granting a conditional use to allow a parking lot in a C-6 zone for certain real property located at Seventh Street and Main Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. First reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross White Robinson Baxter Harris Height and Witcher.
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross White Robinson Baxter Harris Height and Witcher. On the emergency, Ross White Robinson Baxter Harris Height and Witcher. Oh 1838 Councilmember Taylor.
Please call it.
An ordinance granting a conditional use to allow a parking lot in a C-6 zone for certain real property located at North Magnolia Street and East 6th Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. First reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second. On the motion.
Ross White Robinson Baxter Harris Height and Witcher.
Yes.
Your motion to...
Motion to adopt.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross White Robinson Baxter Harris Height and Witcher. On the emergency, Ross White Robinson Baxter Harris Height and Witcher. Oh 1839 Councilmember Baxter.
Please call it.
An ordinance granting a conditional use to allow an auto window tenting business in a C-3 zone for certain real property located at 13120 Crystal Hill Road in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. First reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross White Robinson Baxter Harris Height and Witcher.
Yes.
Move for adoption. Second.
Is the applicant here?
Here?
Back in the back. Can I ask you a question, please?
Yeah, come up to the microphone, please, sir.
And this is only because I watch too much TV.
Oh, my goodness.
The amount, the percentage or whatever that you can tent a window, is that state law or local law?
State.
State law.
City.
State.
State, yeah. It's by state.
Yeah. What is that percentage, you know?
For Arkansas? It's 25 percent. On the front windows and back windows of a sedan, back glass is 15 percent. On a SUV, it's 25 percent on the front windows and 10 percent on the back windows.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, Ms. Whitby?
We have a motion in a second to adopt.
On the motion.
On the motion to adopt Ross White Robinson Baxter Harris Height and Witcher. On the emergency, Ross White Robinson Baxter Harris Height and Witcher. Oh 1840 Councilmember Harris.
Please call it.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 8901, which granted a conditional use to allow metalwork and custom fabrication in a C-4 zone for property located at 1709 West 37th Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. First reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross White Robinson Baxter Harris Height and Witcher.
Yes.
Move for adoption. Second.
On, Ms. Ross?
I guess this is for Mr. Spencer. I mean, this is to, I mean, an existing conditional use to allow for metalwork? Is this because this is a continuing? Can you explain that?
The conditional use was to change one of the conditions from the first time from a year ago. So, went through planning commission and we tried to put the garage doors on the side or rear of the building just to make it look better. And then once they, it's a brand-new building. So, once they got building it and starting designing it, they found out that it wouldn't really work properly on the side. So, there is a couple of other buildings on the same street that have a garage door on the front. So, it's not introducing anything that's not already there. But that's what he's asking for, is to allow the garage door on the front.
And planning is okay with this?
Yes.
Okay.
On the motion.
On the motion to adopt Ross White Robinson Baxter Harris Height and Witcher. On the emergency, Ross White Robinson Baxter Harris Height and Witcher. Oh 1841 Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance amending ordinance 7697, the zoning ordinance, by repealing Article 19 Fords, adopting Article 19 Fords. First reading.
Um, Shaun, you want to come explain that to us?
Please.
We're in the process over the next year and a half of rewriting the zoning ordinance. And so, while we were going through, we found that there was a couple, not necessarily mistakes, but it was just written poorly. And so, instead of waiting a year and a half to fix this, we got with legal, and legal says it's something we need to really make clear right now. So, when someone goes to the Board of Justment or the sign board, it's very clear which one they go to. So, it's not really changing anything other than just clearing it up of, you know, exactly what the board does and which board you need to go to.
Okay. How about a motion to suspend the readings?
I move.
Second. On the motion.
On the motion to suspend the readings, Ross White Robinson Baxter Harris Height and Witcher.
Yes.
About a motion to adopt?
So moved.
So moved.
A second by, by Ms. Robinson. On the motion.
On the motion to adopt Ross White Robinson Baxter Harris Height and Witcher. On the emergency, Ross White Robinson Baxter Harris Height and Witcher. Oh 1842 Councilmember Robinson.
We're gonna hold that.
Okay, we have, um, on the agenda to convene a public hearing. Does that need to be at this meeting? Or does it, that came from the city attorney's office? That we needed to convene a public hearing?
Since there has been a, um, since it has been published to convene a public hearing today, if it's held, we'll need to republish it. If there's anybody here to speak on it...
Now, let me call a public hearing. Okay, let's call a public hearing on, um, oh 1842, which is a, uh, signed overlay district on North Locust. Is anyone here to speak on that? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Uh, Ms. Robinson's gonna hold that. Correct?
Correct.
Okay, we're good to go on that.
Concluding the business.
All right, let me, let me go over a few things, uh, with everybody. We're gonna kind of have a little unique, uh, deal. Uh, you know, we've gotten, uh, all of our new sirens are in, the oldest one being only three years old. So, going from that, from, uh, our oldest one probably was 70 years old before we started replacing them. So, um, we are going to a new, um, siren procedure starting Wednesday, May the 30th. And I wanted y'all to be able to hear it. It's only 45 seconds, so bear with it. But I wanted you to hear it, 'cause on May the 30th, when it does it for the first time, if people are freaking out wanting to know what's going on and all that good kind of stuff, I want y'all to know. So, I've asked Nathan to, um, to play us 45 seconds on what our new tornado alert, uh, or emergency alert's gonna sound like.
This is a test. This is a test of the emergency warning system. This is only a test.
I'm taking my hair out.
This has been a test of the emergency warning system. This was only a test.
That verbiage is also on there. So, the, "This is only a test" is gonna be blasted out to all the 16 neighborhoods where, where these sirens are. Uh, we are gonna have a press conference, um, on Ma, May the 30th to show the media...
The day before.
The day before. Uh, so hopefully, the media will help us get that information out. It is on our website, Nathan?
It will.
It will be on our website and, um, so, they'll give you something to talk about if you go to any neighborhood meetings. Um, okay, I passed out, um, a North Little Rock proud that, um, you know, for, for years and, and last year as I traveled the city, uh, I really found out that, uh, and, and especially with my association with municipal league, how good we really are, you know, as far as the things that we do and, and, uh, our park system and our police and... But our citizens don't really know as much as I think that they would want to know. And so, we've, we've kept our North Little Rock proud slogan, if you will, and so, this is going out to every household and every business in North Little Rock, maybe by the end of the week, right? Wednesday. So, I wanted y'all to see it first. Uh, Nathan and his department, Mr. Billings, Robert did a great job of putting this together. Uh, my plans are, if this is well-received by you and, and your constituents, to do one a quarter. Uh, they're a little expensive, but I, I think that it, it gives us an opportunity to show everybody where, what we're doing and where their tax stack, tax dollars are going. So, this is going out this week, and I wanted y'all to see it before they hit the street.
Mayor?
Yes.
Um, you guys need to talk about the next council meeting, which is scheduled for Monday, May 28th.
Good point. Uh, next council meeting is scheduled on Memorial Day, and we've agreed, uh, to move that to Tuesday after Memorial Day. I don't think we need a vote on that. So, unless anybody has a problem, Tuesday after Memorial Day will be our next city council meeting. Um, Mr. Baxter.
I just, uh, I would venture to say that there will probably be a graduation at, uh, the arena that night. So, just make sure those folks know that, to let us in the parking lots.
Okay, will you remind me of that, Ms. Whitby?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I got, uh, one public comment from, uh, Mr. Ard.
I appreciate y'all voting for that, which I knew you would. I'm sorry some of the people's gonna be voting. You think it's a good reason to vote you out of office when the election comes up, but I don't. There's so many people out there that does not understand the grid, that does not understand what it takes to keep a business going. The North Little Rock Electric is a business, just like Debbie had a business, just like I had a business. And Mayor, I congratulate you. If I understand these figures correctly, you've done away with 40 million, 1,000 debts. I don't think people understand how hard you have to work to get it where we don't have to borrow money to run the city.
Thank you, Mr. Ard. That's, my goal is to, you know, we just paid off $10 million worth of loans last year. So, we're excited about that, and I think it's good fiscal management of the taxpayers' money to do that. Uh, any council members have anything? Ms. Robinson?
I just want to, uh, give a shout-out to the street department. Uh, I think it was two years ago or three years ago, Charlie Height made a comment, it was during the election, about all these signs that were on the easement and stuff. And at the time, we as council members, we tried to follow the rules, you know? But this time, you know, people are still putting, uh, signs on the easements and look like fast as the street department take them up, they come back two days later, return and put the sign back. But I do want to say thank you to the street department because, you know, sometimes it can look really trashy with a lot of signs, you know, out and they focus look like in one particular place. Someone mentioned to me that JFK, you know, looked kind of bad, too, and they were waiting on the highway department to get out there and take care of some of those signs. So, I just want to thank the street department and ask them to continue to move the signs off our easements.
Thank you. Thank you for the...
Let me make one more point on the new siren test. It's only 45 seconds long, and the previous one was three minutes. So, if anybody asks you that, you can be sure and tell them that it, that was on purpose. Mr. Baxter.
So, how many times will the siren, it still rotates? Yes?
It's, it's all digital. There's no rotation. It's, uh, there's no mechanical parts to this.
Because the horns, the horns are in all directions, then?
It's multi-directional and, uh, so, it's a much smarter system. It's, there's a ton of redundancies, and so, it's all digital now. There's actually no need for an audible test, but you want to continue... There's a sub, it's called subaudible, so you wouldn't even hear it. But, uh, you want to do an audible test so people can understand and get used to it. So, when there is a storm, they know what's happening.
Yep. Ms. Ross?
Um, this is back to the science. When I went to early vote last week, I noticed, you know, in the past, uh, at Langham Library, I mean, it was my fault that you were not allowed to put, uh, any kind of signs on the library property. I don't know, but this year, I guess what bothered me the most is the signs down by the Veterans Memorial, and there's some that were taped up onto the fence there. So, I don't know, they, you know, I was okay, yeah, they're on the property, but when it got down to there and they were out on Pershing. So, I don't know if that's something that the city can remove those on that side. There's plenty of room on the other side. And in the past, everybody's been required to hold their signs. They weren't allowed to put them in the ground. Now, I don't know if that was just a Jeff Baskin rule, but I didn't know if it was a city rule.
Mayor, that's been brought to the attention of the library director, and she was going to ask that the sign that was attached to the fence be removed.
But they're all along that fence there, too, though. They're like...
Somebody drive by there tomorrow and give me a report.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Witcher?
Yes. Mayor, I would like to acknowledge James Burry sitting in the audience tonight. Uh, he retired Friday and, uh, with a long history of service to North Little Rock, and we appreciate the time that he spent with us and probably the time that he's gonna volunteer to help us in the future.
Absolutely. James, we're gonna miss you, but we know where you live. Yep, absolutely, we do. So, thank you for, how many, 42?
43.
43 years of service and the last three or four being director. Great job. We appreciate it. Anybody else? About a motion?
Second.
On the motion.
Ross White Robinson Baxter Harris Height and Witcher.
Yes.